I'm just here to observe.
Oh, okay.
Sometimes you want to say something, so...
I always want to say something, I just try to keep it myself most of the time.
Okay.
Did you not invite us out to eat or something? You know, we get hungry.
We've had some discussions on our first subject for today, and we're going to talk some more about it and try to get it to a point that we can actually bring it to the council for a vote at our next meeting, and that would be our water and sewer rates that we've discussed. And we've been pointed out that we're suffering losses in that department, about significant losses in our wastewater, 272,000 last year, negative figures, and 195,000 in water, roughly 450,000, 60,000 in total losses for the year.
450,000?
In our water operation.
And 273 on the other?
No, it's 272 on sewer water and purification, Department 195 loss. So we had, the total is about 467 or so. Alan and Rodney and I met this week and we discussed what we might be able to do to make this a better situation going forward for the city, where we don't have to supplement so many dollars into the department to keep it afloat. And Alan, do you want to address this first before I talk about what I think we ought to do finally? Or do you want to let them tell us, the council tell all of us what they think we ought to do? And us listen first, what do you want to do?
I'd be glad to tell you what we came up with, you know, we ran some, went down to our billing computers and had them run some test runs for us, Rodney did, on what we had talked about before, which is to try to get the sewer revenues in line, where we don't lose so much money, and what it would take to do that. We talked about last meeting that we thought it would take moving the sewer from 50% of water to 100% of water to do that, and that's what our estimates did verify that, that it would take that. It would also take moving our, as you know, we have that scale of the water usage. The bigger user you are, the less you pay for your water. It goes down depending on how many gallons a month you use. And it got down to, I think, down to $1.52 per thousand. So what a big user uses, and our cost of water is over $5 per thousand. So we went through our billing and see what it would do if we moved our cost of any, over the minimum of 2,000 gallons, if we build that at a $5 rate per thousand. That would be enough to get our total water and sewer operations a little better than break even. Not much, but it would get us in the black. Just to give you some estimates, just some numbers. That would take about a 13% increase in water revenues, because we, most of our users are not big users. Then moving our minimums to $5 per thousand, which is approximate our cost of producing water, it would cause about a 13% increase in water revenues for the year. But you can't say it's 13%, because then each person out here would think their bill's going to go up 13%. It's not going to do that. Your bigger users, I think we run on our biggest user, and it would, what, double?
Yeah, double.
Double their bill. I think Rodney running on his own, and his went from an average of $39 up to $42. So his increase was not large, but it was $3.
That's about using 5,000 to 6,000 gallon of water. That's an average, what an average household would use. He usually runs 5,000 to 6,000 gallons a month.
Now, are you on sewer?
On sewer?
No, I'm asking Rodney if he's on sewer.
No, I'm not.
Well, I figured my bill, it just a 6% increase on the base rate and charging costs for the water at $5.40 a thousand, and my bill went up $5.82, and that was on 5,940 gallons. So, but you're saying...
You figured the $5.40, we were just figuring $5.
Yeah, but mine was a, how much did you increase the, just the flat rate, the basic rate?
Doing this, we could...
See, I didn't have the computer to do it, I had to figure all mine out.
By hand?
By hand, so I didn't run a bunch of numbers, I just picked a couple of numbers and ran it.
Our minimum bill is, our minimum bill is $20.38. That's for 0 to 2,000 gallons. You could leave that minimum at that $20.38, and just increase it from five, from after the 2,000 gallons, it goes to $5 per thousand. And you could leave the minimum where it is. And there's a lot of people that only use a minimum bill, and that would, it wouldn't affect them.
Unless they have the sewer.
That's actually the people that needs it, then.
Right, yeah.
Unless they have the sewer.
Yeah, if they have the sewer, it will affect them if you go into...
Yeah, they may have to get out of it.
And this will give you something to think about. I took our total sewer revenues last year, which were $314,000, divided them by our 1,139 customers that we have on sewer. And that come to an average bill of $276 per year for sewer. Average, you know, some are big industrials or more, big water users are more, because it's based on your water bill. But there's a lot of residential customers that are paying, you know, that's not a whole lot of money compared to what everything else in this world costs for sewer. And that was averaging $23 a month, just taking an average of 1,139 customers divided into our total sewer revenues. That would go up to $46 average if we increased our, from 50% to 100% on sewer. That would run the minimum bill of someone on the sewer, if they were sewer and water. I've got the minimum bill runs probably, if I did the tax right, about $31.38. Does that sound better? And that would run, that same person, if we didn't change our minimum water rates and just taxed our big users at our cost of water, that would run up to about $41.57 minimum for someone that's on water and sewer. And that would get our, that rate increase would get our sewer and water systems where there wouldn't be a drain on the city.
People pay $49.95 for some big deal for the internet, monthly internet, which is a communications matter. We're providing water to their homes and sewage disposal for under $50, well under $50 on minimum users, that's still a bargain. My cable for my TV is $81.30 per month, much, much below my water and garbage bill combined. So the city's still giving a good bargain even after the adjustments for these rates. And like it is, we're having to pump that money out of the general fund that we need to keep in the general fund for other repairs, like our roads and things like this. We can't fix our roads because we're having to supplement the water so much. I want you to elaborate a little bit more now about our commercial, our wholesale water. We did some figured calculations of a little different...
Yeah, we're basically calculating what we sell wholesale water. One thing is what they buy from other suppliers and keep it somewhat competitive. And number two, we sell about as much water wholesale as we lose in leaks. So we think that any money that we get off wholesale is just extra money. Our cost for those, for that water, because we're not hiring people to do that, our cost would be the chemicals that's in the water. And we wanted to up that to around $2 per thousand and show that extra revenue. We took in $49,000 last year from our wholesale operation, which is very small dollar amount. And then if we, if we had to do any kind of laying of a pipe or any of that, we would just, I would suggest if they needed our water and we had to do actual buy equipment or hire a person or anything for that, that we could just do a line charge and make sure we get a month of charge to pay us back from any expenses we're out if we served any of the other areas, plus the cost of water. And just to recover our cost of chemicals. It's really just extra water we're producing. That extra water, no more than we're doing, it's about less than 10%, I think, of the water we produce. We can't reduce our, it's not increasing or decreasing, our workforce and our labor producing that water. So anything we can get out of it that's above our cost of chemicals is just extra income.
I see. I appreciate you doing that calculation also. Okay, it's time for questions.
So what'd you say the new cost for a residential customer on a 3/4 inch line, which not all residential's are on 3/4s, is that correct?
I just did it based on the $20.
All residential's on 3/4s, okay.
Yeah. The people that's paying currently $20.38, that's the one I calculated if we increase the sewer and they were also on the sewer.
So it's just going to double that and add the tax back?
Yeah.
If the sewer's 100%?
And we don't tax sewer, we just tax the water.
It's just one bad month, man. If that too, we'll leave it for a week.
Yeah, that's right. Like that'll date.
Yeah. We'll try to, we'll try to go ahead and get that on...
So are you going to leave the overages for the sewer still at $1.80, or are you going to increase them?
If it's a 50,000 or more on 30 gallons. We just did that on how many users we got, it's 50,000 or more.
On sewer?
Yeah, on that overage of 180 per gallon. That's water.
No, that's sewer.
Oh, sewer?
I'm talking about the sewer, there's a scale for the water.
Right.
But I'm talking about the sewer's just a flat, over 50,000.
And what we figured, for instance, NTN's bill, figured what that would be. I ain't got that with me, Rodney, do you know what the sewer, did that change their sewer? That was under the new sewer rate.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Say this additional sewer charge, that's what Tim's talking about. But I bet they figured additional sewer charge based on the water, don't they?
Yes.
So that's just the same rate that you might say is... I don't know.
Did you say you're going to take your water at $5? The new water rate's not going to, overage is not going to fluctuate, but is the overage on the sewer going to remain the same, or is it going to increase too? That's my question.
We figured the sewer rate at 50% like it is now, and then we ran our billing with increasing it to 100%. So do we have any customers that are in that category right there?
Got at least one, because I used them to figure my dues with. May not have any more than one.
I guess NTN would be the only one.
Hospital, don't they?
See, we figured NTN's bill, but I didn't, I didn't see the calculation. I don't know, we just did the dollar amount on it and how much it would increase. And Rodney's got those numbers for you, but I didn't see the breakdown on the billing. Just gave me the new bill.
So there's only, they're the only people on sewer that goes over 50,000 gallons?
I'd have to look to say definitely, but I would think so.
What have you been charging them?
50% of whatever the water bill is.
And now it's going, our other sewer is going to be 100% same as water?
On our sewer customers, and we've got like 3,500 water and 1,100 and so sewer for those people, yeah. Anybody that's not sewer, that sewer increase, of course, won't affect, but it will. Sewer customers, 50% of water bill to 100% of water bill. But there's, the minimum, I was a little surprised when you actually see the numbers. Someone on a minimum bill, a sewer is just $10 a month for somebody on the minimum bill. That seemed to me, I was a little surprised, that's always getting, you know. That's, seems to me like a real low rate.
Yeah, of course, then when you go on up to the larger rates, then it's getting on up.
Then it gets more.
Well, those people, they probably need it.
That's true.
So that's what you're looking at, and they're not using it, so if they start using it, their bill will go up.
It's just that Rodney, the thing that me and Rodney have looked at, our cost of providing sewer has gone up faster than the monies we take in. The rate of increase.
Mine has too.
And that's the problem, that's the whole problem, is our cost are going up faster than our revenues. And we're making up that difference now out of the general fund.
Okay, Wade, y'all got any questions from Alan or Rodney?
I guess I'm going to love you when I'm on the minimum. You got forever behind you.
Are you on sewer? You have a safety net. Are you on sewer? So your bill's going to go up to 41.57?
I guess, I don't even know what it is.
Plus your garbage, so it'd be 41.57 plus 17.
Whatever, there it is, yeah, that's what I say, whatever it is, it's all right with me. Everybody else pays it out with.
I'm just proud to have you.
Yeah, me too, I think it's cheap enough to do it.
All of us know that our reason for these adjustments is not to be ugly to our public, it's just to get us to break even for our operations. Most operations have to at least have enough revenue to maintain their systems and to, if they don't show big profits, they need to be able to replace their pipes and equipment that they wear out, and right now, without supplementing from the general fund, we can't do any of that. We're having to, I wrote a check this morning for $30,000 to put in the water department, in addition to 186 I've already put in this year. So that's 216,000 by my calculation, and we're not halfway in the year. So, I mean, this is where we are, it's got to stop.
Nobody has to run the business that way.
We've been hating to make these adjustments, but there's no choice in the matter. If we, I mean, we could choose to keep paying our tax revenues we collect into the water department to supplement water we're selling to customers at the laws.
And a prime example of what we're spending it on happened Friday. We had a manhole that collapsed right down here behind people's truck bank. We spent 30 hours overtime this weekend working on it, and we're having to replace a manhole down there that sunk six inches. That stuff you can't plan for, and you don't know when it's going to happen.
It's got to come out with what's already planned.
So Tuesday night, this will be on the agenda, and we'll try to improve our operation by what we've discussed here at the table today. We'll try to have a format that the motion will make sense, and then we'll understand what we're voting on. Had a call from one of our commissioners. We've been looking with them at the 5.14 acres of land over in the Bedford industrial park as a site for New County Jail. And this was the request from the commissioner I spoke with. He said, "Would you please get us a price on that piece of land where we can just buy it from you, instead of you gifting it to us, or trading it off in fees, or whatever we wanted to do? Would you just get us a reasonable price for the piece of land?" And that's the due request from them, that we consider selling them the piece of property instead of working it out in fees or...
Do they have anything that we want? How about down at the airport? Don't they own some land at the airport and set it like fire? That we're needing, got some land already down there, huh?
Their land that's down there has the county jail on it, that's got to be torn down. There's no telling what we're going to run into in expenses. We've tried demolition and some old buildings before. We spent a million dollars cleaning up the Munzemware property just before we came into office and finished it up right after we came into office.
Alan, I was just trying to see if, instead of anybody having to pay out money, if they had something down there that you thought we might need later, of just trading, you know? What they're going to want us to do, if we don't trade something, and what they're going to want us to do is give them money.
Well, they're asking to buy.
They're going to be priced.
They're a prostitute. Price to us. And that's what their request is, is to get them a price for the piece of land.
I wouldn't be a favor of giving it to them, getting them city property for a county job.
Yeah, but that's really what I'm saying, if we could trade, if something that we needed down here around the airport, because we're, the city's always needing some property, it seems like down there around the airport.
Might need to plan a work session and hear from them direct before we can ask all these questions. The only request I had today was to approach the council with the idea of setting a price for that piece of property they've looked at. And they did have a test done on the property to see if it would hold a foundation, such as a heavy building like a jail, and it checked out fine. All the test drill holes that they drilled, the soil was excellent for building. And they've mortgaged it in the land after they had it tested.
How many acres are they wanting?
5.14. It's laid out in that parcel.
Is it an empty lot, or is it next to somewhere?
It's an empty lot just past the Department of Pensions.
DHR building.
There's a drive in there that's got a kind of a cul-de-sac turnaround. It's just, it's just past the drive, and it actually connects to the drive that goes in there. I'd like very real to think about this and consider pricing the property to them at what we think's a reasonable price.
Well, couldn't you just get an appraisal on it? Do you want to do that, or you want...
Well, that's a good, that's a good rule of thumb, is an appraisal. You know, whether we charge them full price or not, them would be...
We know what we're doing, kind of going at if we're going to get an appraisal.
Yeah.
And we don't have to ask them hardly that much, but if we don't, if it's not, you know.
And have you talked with the industrial board? I know that that's a mixed park up there now, but they're still...
Yeah, we've talked with the industrial board more than once about...
I mean, about the price.
Oh, no, no, this is, this is a request to talk to you all. And if, you know, if it's a joint meeting after... And if, you know, if it's a joint meeting after our consideration would bring them...
Y'all, we just need to get it appraised instead of us shooting something out. I'd rather do that, I don't wanna, you know, if anything, then we may want to ask a little less, we sure don't want to ask.
Let it be a good starting point.
Yeah, yeah, we know kinda what we're doing. What the land's worth over there, of course, it'd be worth a lot more later if it was something.
That, that can be done, I can arrange an appraisal. If I need to consult with the industrial board before ordering an appraisal, I'd be willing to do that.
Because we, we just don't know, I don't, I don't know about the rest of it, I have no idea about the story.
Well, we need to bring this to a motion in the council meeting before we even order the appraisal.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
We'll put that on Monday night agenda. For that time, Tuesday night, I'm sorry. It'll be a Tuesday night meeting. So I'll talk to the chairman of the industrial board and I'll talk to Scott Hunt and see what all we gotta do to line it up.
Does everybody agree, is that, that they don't know where to start doing this?
Well, I mean, somewhere it's publicized that we offer our lots for so much within our industrial park. So I don't know if that's true for the mixed park or if it's just true for the, the park down at Fulton Bridge. But, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, C-Three has advertised, you know, the, the lots for a specific amount. And I may be mistaken, but I don't...
I've heard something somewhere, I don't know the facts.
So, I mean, we need to get with the industrial board and see, I mean, they may already have everything all mapped out. Now, the map that you had was an antique map, so hopefully they have a, an up-to-date map. But, I mean, they may already have, have amounts to go with each, each lot or parcel. And I don't know if that would be considered one lot or how they're, you know, how it's divided up, I don't know.
I think this would be a different situation than dealing with somebody else. Dealing with the county for a county jail or whatever, something, the city and the county working together. I think it'd be different than...
But, I mean, if the industrial board's got one price set, we don't wanna, you know, we sorta need to be close to what they're...
Well, we'll know, we'll know if we get the price. But I, I think we, it'd be completely different, one, the county and the city, they're trying to work together. You know, have it, you know...
I tried, I tried, before we came in here, I, I just had to leave Scott a message, ask him if he could come and talk with us this afternoon. I told him, you know, that we'd been asked to price the land. I said, it might not be a fair question to you since you work with the county and the city. It might not be a fair thing to do to ask your opinion, but I said, you know, if you have an opinion, I'd like for you to share it with me. But he didn't get back to me before we started our meeting, so...
But from my understanding, the county don't have much money to build the jail with.
They're searching, they're searching for funds.
That's what I'm saying, and, and I, I think we should try to help them if we can, because it'll actually, in a way, help us too, because we've got an overcrowded, bad overcrowded jail. And I think we ought to try to...
This past week, Kevin had a hundred and sixty-one in there.
Yeah, there you go.
It's slated for eighty-something.
Yeah.
We want to continue to have a good rapport with them, because we want our, our, our people who are arrested to go to the county jail, not a city jail. We don't want them in the jail business.
Well, that's what, if we make them mad, that's what we can do.
That would be a real awful thing if we were not allowed to put our prisoners there. Can't even think about it. We'll, we'll make haste to try to, they're, they're trying to meet on these matters now and go forward with the plan, so unless they know they can have the land and at what price, it'll probably slow them down some, so we'll try to get the facts together and, and, and get some information. Maybe we can at least vote to have it appraised Tuesday night, maybe we can get that over into it. If we need an appraisal, if there's already a set price, maybe we can find that, that price too, Tammy. Good point, I think I've heard there is a price for acre. I don't know if that would be for a manufacturing plant or for a jail or for a Department of Pensions. I don't know if that's all, it's the same price for every opportunity.
But you would hope they had some basis to come up with their price.
Absolutely, absolutely, that would make sense to me that they, when the part was designed, that there was a price given for the land so they could make deals on the land.
And I'm okay, now you can go ahead and do all that stuff and throw them a price out there that's outrageous or whatever, I don't know what it'd be, but they can get even with you. And if I was them, I would. Now, I mean, I'm just standing here in this meeting, and y'all know it, and I know it. There's any backbone to them, if we throw a price out there, it's got to be, and we need the new jail. And if we can, we need to help them. And, and we need to work with them, because if we don't, down the road, they get even.
I'm on board with what you're saying, and I see, I see it in that light too, we need to be fair in every way.
Yeah, right, because they need a new jail and we need them to have it, because they've got the other one bad.
We'll work on that matter. I want y'all to be aware that we'll be having, at the beginning of our meeting, we'll be having a public hearing for the matters of alcohol ordinance for, is that Max?
Yes, for Max Minnetmore, they're changing owners.
Changing ownership. They won't be, they've already been licensed for some time for retail here and cable line. And there's an off-site package store there also. And it'll be for alcohol ownership continuation license for the new owners.
Where is this located, where is two fifteen Vector?
Across the street, yeah, across the street from you.
Right across the street from the Yamaha shop. I won't have to walk for it, well. Would you have to quit about fifty years ago?
Do what now?
I didn't think they sold liquor there anymore.
Yeah, they do.
In the glass store.
Well, they stopped, I think, at one time and put, tried to put pool tables in or something. And I don't think that worked out, so they put the package store...
Well, I tell you one thing, but I have never heard a loud noise, really truly a noise or anything over there, anything.
Well, I mean, they've done everything they're supposed to do.
Yeah, you wouldn't know they're over there, I mean, under that, those conditions, I mean.
But the ABC board's just waiting on us to officially say we're okay with the trans...
Well, I live across the street from them, and I didn't know it, but I sure wouldn't vote against it. I don't never, it never bothered me.
We were basically doing this for the new ownership.
Yes, for ABC.
It was previously licensed for these sales. And it'll be a continuation.
I sure never heard anything about it over there.
Let's talk briefly about our tie vote we had the other night on the testing amount of times. In the handbook, I believe it reads that we'll pay for one testing of our guys that have got to get certification. Somehow, I feel that we need to get that taken out of the handbook or set a number of times that we can pay for these tests, more than. I, I'm just not satisfied with one, I don't think it's fair. The percentage of people that pass the test the first time, I just don't think it's fair to our employees to require them to get certification and then charge them out of their pocket for the test. I just can't see that that's a fair thing. I know it, I know it's in the handbook now, but I'd like to see if we can vote that out of the handbook and change it somehow to where we can all agree that we need to pay for more than one test.
What, what do you recommend?
Or the majority can agree on it. I, everybody don't have to agree to pay for more than one, but I feel that that's pretty tough on our employees.
Could I excuse myself, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'd interrupt.
No, no problem.
I enjoy talking.
You come any time, we, we're just trying to discuss the business of the city.
Don't say that, I'll be sure.
Just bring money when you come back.
It's donuts?
Come any time you want to, Mr. Mayor. Wade recommended four times, Jean made a motion for three. And, and I believe myself and Jean and Robert Joe voted for the three. Wade was wanting to vote for four. Herb and Tammy voted no against the motion or, or either abstained. Did you vote, Herb, on that matter? You voted no, right? Okay. Are you for staying at one time, or do you wanna change it?
I thought a lot about that, I, first place, I think the test is too high, the price of it.
Oh, so it's terrible.
Yeah, it's terrible, it sure is. Hundred and something dollars.
I thought it was more three hundred and something.
Yeah, three hundred and something, that's what I thought, that, uh... I think that the price of that is too high, and I'm wondering if they're not doing it for a profit. Who sets that price?
Can I comment on this, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Well, AIDM sets the price, that's, I'm about in Department of Environmental Management. That's, they set their, they have rates set for everything. What I wanted to comment on, uh, I, I got some stats last week of through AIDM. The highest grade made in the last twelve months, in the last year, the highest grade made on a grade four water exam was an eighty-one. The man that made the eighty-one on that test, the first time he took it, he made a sixty-five on it. The second time he took it, he made a sixty-eight on it. The third time he took it, he made an eighty-one. And that was the highest grade made across the whole state in the last year. So it's not easy, I mean. And the pass rate is still down around ten, twelve percent passing.
Is that the same test they take on what we're speaking on? I hate that, we, we, I wish we could give them four or five times. Heck, for us, we're gonna have to pay three hundred and something dollars every time everyone takes it.
When they go in to take this test, they have four hours to take it.
Rodney, how much, how much time do you have to invest in an employee before they can take the test?
That's another thing that's fixing to change, the regulations.
So they had like a certain amount of times they had to be apprenticed or something like that?
I had a, we had a class this last week, and we got introduced to the new regs that's coming out. Before, well, I'll give you the example. When I started with the water department, we had to work in the plant for the nineteen hundred hours before we could even take the exam. AIDM changed that to, to help systems out by saying, uh, they can take it at any time during the nineteen hundred hours. They changed that several years ago. But if they pass it before the nineteen hundred hours is up, they're considered an intern until their nineteen hundred hours is up. The new regs that's coming out says that when you hire a man off the street to become an operator, he starts working in that plant and starts preparing himself for that test. Once he takes the test and passes, then he starts his nineteen hundred hour. So you may have a man working six months in the plant, because it, it takes at least six months of schooling, training, and all that stuff before anybody is ready to take an exam.
But the man that did the internship with us did not, he's not employed anywhere? He did it all on his own?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
So that is an option, people are allowed, you can...
He took classes at Florence, uh, water classes. He went out on his own. While he was working a full-time job, he went to classes at VAC. He went, and, and he got his, part of his nineteen hundred hours at our water treatment plant. Not, we weren't paying him, he did it all on his own. So yes, that is an option for a person if they wanna get into that field.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, it's...
But you still have to get the nineteen hundred hours somewhere.
But you don't have to be employed with the water treatment plant in order to go for the testing.
Right.
But that was what I was getting around to.
Have you got any suggestions of what you would like to do? I mean, that's what we may, personally may, I know nothing about it, so I, I'd like to know something about how you feel about it and what you want to do.
There is, there is multiple people in this state that have took that, took any of those tests four or five times. I don't, before that was put in the handbook, there was no limit on it. To me, this is another thing. To me, when you hire somebody, like, we, we have to, when we're hiring somebody, we have to hire people that we think is, is gonna be qualified to study and take the test, go to school, take the test and pass it. That's the type of people we have to look at.
Right.
Because we can't invest in people that we don't think's gonna be able to pass it.
But, I mean, this has gotten broken down, and we're talking specifically about the water department, but the handbook, that's in general, that's all departments. That's your police officers, that's your firemen. If you're, if we send a police officer to school and he can't pass the test, if he can't pass, I mean, we're not gonna keep sending him back to school. The, the firemen that have to pass their CPAT test, if they don't pass, I mean, we don't keep paying for them.
But see, they have separate regulations to the state.
But I mean...
Through certifications where they can't go more than that.
Now, what, the CPAT, you can take as many times as you pay for it, can you not?
I don't know about that, I know a police officer, you have to wait two years. If you fail out, you wait two years before you ever go back.
But, but the handbook is in general, so when we think about this, we're thinking about it in general. It doesn't say specific water department, water treatment. It says anything that requires...
Any certification.
Any certification. So, I mean, we're talking about all departments. Now, the way I understand it is your CDLs are not required because we are a municipality, so our men do not, they're not required to have CDLs in order to operate our machinery because of their employment. But if they were, then we would be responsible for paying for one test and if they didn't pass, but since they're not required, we shouldn't be paying for CDLs. So, I mean, this is, this is testing in general.
But another thing on the water, in the new regs that's coming out, one person is, is not gonna be able to take the same test over three times in a year period. So if he takes that, the same test three times, he has to wait to take it again. But now, if you take it, say you take it in January, you take it again in May, and you take it again in December, uh, that's, they don't fully have the regs laid out like they, they haven't put the regs into place yet, but they're still working on it. But that's the thing, they're... Like, if you took it, like I said, January, May, and December, well, that year would be up from the first time you took it. So you could turn around and go back and start taking it again. And that's something they haven't worked out yet.
But how much... That's three hundred and something dollars every time they take it?
Yeah, but here's the thing.
It cost you a thousand dollars if you took it three times.
But here's the thing. When we hire an employee, we're investing in that employee. We're paying these hourly wages a week. So then, we're paying for him to go to school. We're paying... Once they are certified, we're paying for CEHs. They have to... We have to have twenty-four CEHs every three years. So the amount of money we're investing in people, three hundred and twenty-five dollars is not a drop in the bucket.
No, but if they take... What I'm saying, if they take it three times, well, that's a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And you're paying all three times. And then if they don't pass it, well, your thousand dollars is thrown out the window.
Well, plus, all your other money you paid on schooling and everything.
Yeah, everything you spent on.
So we'd be better off to hire somebody from another town, like we get hired away from us, than to recruiting new people and starting from the beginning. You remember that next time it's time to hire somebody.
And maybe usually hire, say, for a year, new ones.
New ones? We don't... We don't normally have much turnover before it's hiring operators, unless we lose one.
We had Carter retire. We had a man that was supposed to be his replacement go to another town and go to work. So we lost two operators back to back up there at his water treatment plant and to retirement and being hired away from us in less than a year, I guess.
And we had one retire to wastewater plant.
Yeah, and we had a retirement down there for a certified man, so... But our men would tend to stay with us for a long time. You know, we've got a new, young certified man up there that is from this town. He's likely to be with us a long time now.
Yeah.
He's just passed his test, and he'll soon be a full-out operator for us. Has he got his hours in yet?
He's got his hours in. He's sending in his... All of his information to get his license. So he'll have to wait till he gets his license back.
That hire has already paid off for us.
Yeah.
We thought he could pass the test when we put him to work. That was part of reviewing those applications. We have to use some judgment. Can this man in fact become certified?
Now, Ronnie had mentioned before that the police officers are requiring a minimum ACT. Is your department... Is there some... I'm assuming Ronnie's... I'm assuming that came from somebody higher up than local, but Ronnie said with the...
Probably from Apost.
Okay. So is ADM required a minimum ACT?
No.
Or anything like that?
Are you needing to hire someone now, Rodney?
No.
Oh, wow.
Oh, we still got some testing to do. And, you know, the question is whether we make the people taking the test pay it out of their pocket or if the city's going to pick up the bill for the test.
So you're wanting this to be retroactive?
Well, I'd like for us to take care of the two that we've sent to be tested. We're gonna have to ask them for the money back. We did send our check to pay for their test. If we don't retro, we're gonna have to ask them to pay it back to the city.
You're talking about before they go to work, or if they fail it? Is that what you mean, or they fail it?
We paid for their test.
Yeah.
We said we had to send the money in so they can go be tested, and the city cut the check.
And you had anybody to fail over the test?
Several times. In the past, there have been some with the city. We had one to take it five times. We've had several to take it three times.
And you've had a few to take it one time?
Yeah. I took it one time myself, but...
What are you recommending now? Are you needing to... What do you recommend? What are you... That's... Think that's what...
I would like to see it like it was before, taken out of the handbook.
You want it open-ended?
But, I mean, if it comes down to three or four times, I would... I would recommend five times. If you can't pass it five times.
That way, we're gonna have about two thousand dollars invested in one seventeen, five or something.
You don't have more than that because you don't have schooling invested in them and hourly wages and everything else.
And they can't work by themselves until they're passed, so you've got two men on one shift when it could be one man on a shift, so...
We might... We might have to consider that if a person can't get certified after five testings, that they're automatically going to dismiss themselves.
Well, now, you said you were gonna check with some towns around. Did you?
I don't have it yet.
Most municipalities don't... Or most systems don't have a limit on it. But most of them are... Well, all of them around this area are served under a water board.
Well, the ones that do, if most don't, the ones that do, what's their limit?
In other words, if we're going to hire them, we don't have much choice.
If you don't put the time and money in them.
I'll be with five area lawyers this coming Tuesday, and I will ask them.
I actually told the instructors last week in our class that we had it in our handbook that we would only pay for the one test, and they said, "You've got to begin." I said, "No, ma'am, it's in there." Because, I mean, they know the pass rates. They know all the stats on it.
But can we change the handbook?
Yes.
Well, it sounds like we need to change it. I mean, just... And what I'm hearing here today, in my mind, what I think we actually ought to do is let them have it three times. If they can't do it three times, they know, you know... Or I don't think they're handling the job.
We can vote to amend what's in there and change it from one time to whatever. Y'all decide, or we can vote to remove it completely and leave it open-ended like y'all. But that's the problem we ran into at the last meeting. We couldn't reach a decision on it.
How many times?
Yeah. I think that's the question. If we amend it, we can change the number of times.
What are you saying we need to do now?
Oh, I'm not saying...
Well, yeah. What were you... Yeah, but you was talking about...
The way you would vote on it.
Yes.
You would make a recommendation to either remove it completely from the handbook, leaving it open-ended, or you would vote on it as a recommendation to amend what's already in there. And amending it would be to change it. You're changing it from the one time to higher than any times.
Like I said, three times?
Yeah, three or five, whatever y'all... Whatever y'all decided on. And that's the way I would word it for y'all to vote on it Monday... Or Tuesday night.
I'd be willing to amend it three times anyway. And if somebody thinks it's better to amend it to five, I would go, "It's all right with me." I mean, I hate to put that much money on somebody, and then still I can't hire them. I would certainly go along with three times.
The man that passed it on the fifth time works for Rodney, does he do his work correctly, Rodney?
Yes, sir. What do you think we ought to... What do you think?
I'd say if you're gonna put a limit on it, I would like... I'd like to say five.
I'd change my motion to five times then. We got to do something. We got to hire people, and they've got to have me at the last.
We don't absolutely require them, but the law requires them to be certified people. It's not the city's requirements. They can't operate our plants without certification. They can be an aide. They can stand by and work with someone that is certified, but there's times when we need that man there certified and operating.
I mean, the object is for them to pass it the first time.
Oh, yeah. But what... Listen, this... Now, we say here, I say here five times, but when you get them, let them take the test, maybe let them take it twice or something, are they already working then? And you say then, you should be able to say then whether you want to pay up to five times to get them approved and keep them, or that'd be a good time to let them go. You could do that, right? You wouldn't have to pay for it.
Well, I mean, what grounds would he let them go on?
That you couldn't pass the test.
But you're giving them five tries and they can't do it.
Well, we ain't get... Well, we ain't get... They don't know we're giving them five.
If you amend the handbook, and they read the handbook, they're gonna know. And, you know, that was brought out the other night. They didn't know it was in the handbook. Well, once you're given the handbook, it's your responsibility to read it. And once you're hired, you should know everything that's required of you to do the job. I mean, it shouldn't be a surprise. I mean, when you've interviewed for a job, did you not know what was required of you before you went in to do it? You want to know what's required, how long do I have to... Or what are my hours gonna be? How much am I gonna get paid? I mean, it shouldn't be a surprise.
Well, listen, we're sitting here, we're talking about... We've got to do something. We've got to hire people, and we've got to agree on something.
Well, depending on how it is today, the men have already been hired. The bottom line is, the nitty-gritty is, the handbook said we were only going to pay for them to be tested one time, but they required more than one testing, and the city paid for it twice. So we violated our own handbook, and we're going back to change it because we've already undone what we said we were gonna do, and that's the bottom line there.
Well, we didn't do that, did we? Here, us?
Yes.
Was that what we voted on last time? And I thought we didn't vote on anything.
We voted to table it.
We tabled it. We didn't pass it.
After the time, we tabled it.
Yeah, we didn't. I didn't think we done anything last time. But we gotta do something. We can't... We gotta do something, right?
No, we don't want to do anything. The men are already hired.
Well, what if we were to hire somebody else?
They'll either fall under these rules or they won't come. I mean, it's not a matter of having to do something in order to hire somebody.
Well, if they're gonna have to take this test, and you got thirteen percent passing it, you might not hire anybody for two or three years, but one person or two that can pass the test that quick without taking it more than once. Is that right? And that you got to pass the test?
Yeah.
And if we sit here and say that all we're gonna pay for is one, then not gonna... Somebody tell me what we need to do to hire people, I mean, and qualify people. That's what I'm looking at. That's what I'm for. What can we do?
Just think about if you did it open-ended, you can base it on the employee individually.
Right.
Yeah. If you did it open-ended, and he took it three times, and you said, "He's not gonna pass it three times." Or, "He's not gonna pass it the fourth time," well, it might be better off to cut him loose and let him go.
Yeah.
If you had it open-ended, you could do that.
Well, can we have it open-ended?
Yeah.
That's something we need to think about then before the meeting to have it. Now, what do you think about that? With hiring you, you want to open in?
If I had applied for that job, and that's what I wanted to do, it's my profession, and somebody told me I wasn't gonna pass that test, I'd bust a gut showing them that I was going to. And if I didn't pass it the first time, I'd do everything I could to pass it the second time. But I'd have known going in what was required of me.
Well, that's like me going to whip the little boy after I... He whipped it one time. I don't try it again the time... Take that the third time, and I go, "I quit."
Quit and say it is admirable.
I mean, if you had it open-ended, that would fall through under any department, police department, fire department. You know, they can pass the test, send them on.
Yeah.
But that's gonna fall back to you to send them on, so it'll be up to your discretion.
What do y'all think, Herb? What do you think?
That sounds better to me than anything.
Have it open-ended. Me too. That's me, yeah.
It has more control, won't it?
Yeah.
We'll try to bring it back to the council.
So we need to vote on it Tuesday night as a recommendation to remove it from the handbook?
It's not like they don't have the opportunity. It's just that they have to pay for it. I mean, I don't... I don't know. You say you... We're not restricting them. They can take it fifteen times if they want to pay for it.
If they have to take it that many times, we don't want it.
No, they couldn't take it. They couldn't take it fifteen times if they wanted to pay for it, because we wouldn't keep them around that long.
Five times, about it, wouldn't it?
That'd be about it.
They'd run out of money. They didn't have a job. Well, it's not funny, but anyway. Looks like to me though.
But you would have more control on how to handle it.
On open-ended?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I believe that's the answer to it under the circumstances.
Well, you'd have lead control.
Yeah.
I mean, you could tell probably. You'd know after a while if a man's capable or he's not capable, if he's not.
And some people just don't test well.
No.
I mean, they're smart as whip, but they can't...
Can't test, yeah.
When you walk in there and you've got that test sitting in front of you, and you've got four hours to take it.
But you passed it the first time?
I would like...
Maybe you can have him out a little bit.
I wouldn't write him up for a PhD if he passed it the first time. One last stab at this, and this has been thrown out to the comments. This next meeting is the final time that we can consider changing council members' pay for meetings or the mayor's salary, either or both. So if any of you want to make any comments on that at this time, fine. If you don't want to make any comments, then that's all I had for today.
Well, I don't want to comment on that, but I want to know about the streetlights. When are we gonna get our new streetlights?
I've got Scott's reviewing our final agreement, and Ms. Weaver's coming by to pick them up. I've got it in his hands right now. The state finally gave a permit for those lights to be put up on the state right-of-way poles. But I wanted Scott to look at the agreement before I sign it, so it's in his hands. I'll try to get it back from him before the week's out and get it signed if he don't see any tweaking on it. And we'll get the rest of our LED lights put up. Ms. Weaver called me on it. She'd been to Celigent, got their agreement yesterday, and she wanted mine, but I didn't get it back from Scott yet.
And we talked about the money for the water department, but we didn't talk about any changes in the policies to try to help with the problem. And we didn't talk about leak adjustments, and we didn't talk about rental property... rental properties and people moving off and, and leaving bills and things like that. And did you make any suggestions for anything like that?
After me and Alan have been through all this, uh, the bottom line as far as the money goes, the bottom line is we're selling water cheaper than we're producing. And we fix that problem, all the rest of the things will take care of itself.
Well, I mean, if we still have people moving off and not paying their bills and, I mean...
There, I don't know of any way to control that.
Maybe a, a larger deposit on rental properties?
That, that would be a possibility.
Or having the landlord and the tenant be on the account? It was my understanding that the majority of the, the bills that we are, have on the books down there are from rental properties and people would just move off and we'd never know where they were. So if we required a larger deposit for the rental properties, I mean, that might help.
A lot of those, we, we get it back because when they try to come back on our water, we will, that, we make them pay the bad debt and the deposit before they can even have water service. That's the, the best way we can get a lot of it back. And we do a lot of that as far as people trying to come back and get on our water once they left without telling us.
And if we can ever get that Intercept Alabama program started in almost fair time, where we can actually attach to their state income tax return if they have unpaid utilities.
If they're on the bad debt, it would automatically come out of their state return.
It will come out of their income tax return.
That's great.
Well, a lot of that is the cost of doing business.
It is. I mean, you're not going to stop that.
I've looked at, at different ways of, of handling that, uh, with bad debt. I've looked at, you know, taking the small things for it. And it is, I've looked at, I carried something up to the courthouse one time. And it's crazy, the chain you have to go through.
But if you required a larger deposit for the rental property and the cutoff was run every two months, then, you know, you're going to have that deposit there and then you're going to know it's, I mean...
How mu, how much do you charge for a deposit?
Deposit, a hundred-dollar deposit and then a twenty-five-dollar service fee, uh, attaches to that.
Is that before they get water to begin with? That sounds like you're going to, you're not going to lose much.
How much is out on bad debts?
Right now, I don't know exactly what the total amount is.
If you look back over fifty years, and I'm talking about a year, you know, at a time if you're getting that kind of money upfront, you know, to begin with, you're not getting hurt much.
At one time on the, we did go up on our reconnect fee when we were doing the cutoff list. We went for twenty-five to fifty dollars reconnect fee.
And that's getting some of your money back. You're doing about all you can. Probably coming out better what you're doing now than you would if you was doing something now. I don't know whatever you could do, because you take those people that can't pay. They don't have the money to pay down to begin with. They're probably borrowing it, you know, for the fee.
But, I mean, you could, you could turn around and, and change policies, act a policy, but the bottom line is we're selling water cheaper than we're making it.
Yeah, and at five dollars-
That's where we need to go up.
And y'all, you suggested five dollars a gallon. Five, five dollars, a thousand, but our cost is five dollars and forty cents. So we're still selling it for less than we're making it.
We make up on the minimum bill. Some of those we get, and, and we've got several of those. I don't know, we're getting more than five dollars for those on our minimum. It's twenty dollars for two thousand, so that's ten dollars a thousand we're getting on minimum bills. But, yeah, you're right on, on the-
But, um, everything over, we're selling for-
About forty cents.
Less than what we're making and then you look at the people. I mean, so that's going to cut into your overage on the minimum because you aren't making-
We tried to match some other cities with that.
But those numbers will put us in the black on the water.
The numbers that you gave us to fold on tomorrow night will put us in the black. I think that's what we need to do. I don't believe we'll go up any more than that at one time that you got.
It's so heavy.
We really didn't go too long, but yeah, it's been, gone too long and I, I don't, I-
And the majority of systems put it in place where every year it goes up one or two percent.
Right.
And cover the additional cost per year, every year.
That's what you should do, they should do, starting, every year start doing that, you know? And, uh, then you don't have to worry about it like we've had to here to up it all that. Because they won't never notice a little bit each year. They won't, I mean, they won't notice it out of their money, is what I'm saying, pay. But you let it go, like you said, fifteen years will, huh, it's off the depth.
It's, yeah, a little.
You got to, somebody's got to be about to willing to catch up and then you, they can start doing it. Whoever's there, you, and, I mean, and start doing it a little bit at a time.
Y'all keep in mind the storms are coming. Be safe. I appreciate y'all coming. Just over the business today.
I would like to say something. The other day when we were all meeting, Alan and Rodney and myself and you, I had questioned Rodney on some things and I wanted to apologize to him for that because he had already explained it to me. And, uh, so I'm sorry. I, I overstepped my bounds and I apologize.
An apology, sir.
Thank you.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/49CountyNewsTV.